On May 1st, it's May already. The purpose of this pre-meeting briefing is to conduct a briefing session with administrative staff regarding the posted agenda for the regular board meeting, which is scheduled for 7:00 PM tonight. For the record, board members present are Tara Hrbachek, Kim Brady, Marjorie Barnes, Carolyn Benavides, Eliana Garza Rojas, Cassandra Hatfield, and I'm Randy Shackman. We are quorum and constitute a quorum and can conduct business. Next item on our agenda is Audience for Guests, and no one has signed up for Audience for Guests for this meeting, so we're going to skip that and go straight to our administrative reports. Dr. Eldridge, are there any administrative reports?
We have several pre-meeting reports. The first one is Item 5E, Considerance and Acceptance of Donation of an Ambulance for our Fire Academy at Creekview High School. LeAnn Stone, would you like to introduce our guests and give a little overview of our ambulance donation?
Good evening. First, I'm very excited to just have the continued support of Carrollton Fire Rescue along with the City of Carrollton to make sure that our Fire Academy has been able to launch in these last two years as we've got it started. And so I'm just grateful for all of their donation of time and resources to help make that happen. But who we have with us today, we have Chris Holterhoff, who is the current instructor. And so we're going to have him come up and talk about that, about the ambulance donation that's coming in. And then it will be built into the, well, I guess I can speak a little bit on it. The ambulance is actually going to be used for two different programs of study at Creekview High School. And so the back part, the box of the ambulance, is going to be removed from the actual ambulance, from the vehicle itself. And then we're going to have that installed in the new classroom so that there is a space where the students can simulate an ambulance ride without having to actually get on the physical ambulance. And I'll have Mr. Holterhoff come up and speak about that a little bit. But the space constraints you deal with while on the back of an ambulance trying to get IVs started, I sound like I've probably done that. I haven't, but I've heard them tell me about it. And so anyway, trying to get IVs started while you're rushing them to the hospital is something different than starting an IV in, you know, with plenty of space to operate. And so we're really excited about our students having that opportunity on our campus at Creekview High School once that that space is complete. And then the chassis of the vehicle along with the engine and all of, I mean, we're not taking the car apart, we're going to drive that around Creekview and put that in the auto shop and let those guys work on it. Because it is a functioning ambulance, but it is not in its best working order. That's why they are able to donate it to us. And so we want an opportunity for our auto students at Creekview that work in that diesel department to be able to have an opportunity to work on an extra vehicle there on campus. So the rest of the vehicle will remain on campus at Creekview High School. But Chris, did you want to come share anything extra? And then introduce Julian as well?
Sure. Hi, I will not speak very long. I just wanted to make the point that the City of Carrollton's motto is where connections happen. And the city manager, my fire chief, Michael Thompson, who would like to be here tonight, but he's out of the state, they thought the ambulance donation was a good way for them to actually follow through on a motto because sometimes they're easy to just sound nice but not actually be important. So we are excited to have it be used by the program, and it's going to be great. And yeah, I think that's mostly what I wanted to say. Mr. Julian Gomez is going to be the lead instructor next year, but I'm still going to be around at least 33 to 50% of the time, if not more, because next year is the first year that we're doing all of the dual-credit stuff. So it's very exciting. Thank you.
That is great. We would like to honor this donation with a photo op. Mr. Shulock, who is the principal at Creekview is here, and Ms. Stone, and the two firefighters, Dr. Eldridge, if it's not too much to stand up and get you to jump over the.
Maybe you guys come up here and we can stand behind you. I think it's a unified effort. Yes. We're setting. Thirty-three percent.
At least guaranteed.
Sit down. We open the window. Just a little bit. Okay. We got our window? Yes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Okay, our next administrative report is Item 5O, Consider and Approve Technology for Summer 2025 Campus Construction Projects. Dr. Stout.
Thank you, Dr. Eldridge, President Shackman, and trustees. I'd like to provide some clarification on that consent agenda item regarding their request to, basically what we're doing is we've chosen to separate the technology purchase of panels for Creekview, Blaylock, Ranchview, and McLaughlin-Strickland campuses as part of their construction project. We had learned that we're able to leverage education discounts on the, as a school district, on the purchase of those boards if we purchase them directly as opposed to going through the regular process of having the contractor purchase them. And so we wanted to make sure that we are using the dollars efficiently and purchase them on our own with those education discounts. We evaluated, to be a little preemptive, we evaluated the possibility of taking some of the display panels out of other campuses and shifting them around to cover the new construction, but determined that that is not advisable for a couple of different reasons. The first one is that these are not cart-based boards, the way the ones that are currently on the campuses, they're on carts that can be moved around. These are semi-permanent installations that are going to be mounted directly on the wall. The current boards that we have, the current display panels that we have on campuses right now are five to six years old. And their OPS, which is the brain that runs the devices, is operating right now using Windows 10. Windows 10, Microsoft Windows 10 software is going end-of-life October 15th of 2025, just over five months from now. So the boards at that time, the boards that we have currently do not support Windows 11. And so the impending update can render the boards inoperable, which would lead in the long run to a larger overall expense as we removed those boards and then replaced them with ones that were able to support Windows 11. You would have to install, uninstall, and reinstall the boards. So we figured it was just easiest to do a clean start and provide new technology in the new construction sites.
Any questions?
So for those construction contracts that we had already executed, we are getting a change of scope or reduction in scope and amendment to cut that out?
Generally with the.
Yeah. Dr. Stout said that we see the savings benefit by buying directly and instead of including in the construction contractor contract. So for those contracts that we've already executed, we are seeing a change in scope in those contracts for reduction or taking that money back?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Ms. Benavides?
I was thinking about the time, you said they're five or six years old. What was the longevity presented at that time? And, excuse me, and what will be the new longevity with all the extra expense to upgrade?
Typically, well, there isn't an expense to upgrade. It's just purchasing new boards instead of reutilizing the older ones. Typically, the lifespan of those interactive display panels are five to seven years old.
So we're right on target?
Five to seven years. We are on target, yes. Windows is kind of throwing a loop for us right now. We have, the boards that we have right now, we're going to try and modify by pulling the current brains out and ordering other OPS units that are compatible with Windows 11 and installing those, which we can do on the cart-based board because we can access the back of the panel. But that is still in the testing phase, and until we upgrade to Windows 11, we're working through it as best as we can because we figure if the hardware on the ones that are still going to be used in the campuses that currently have them, if the hardware is still operational, then if we upgrade the processor, then we can continue to take advantage of the hardware itself.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you, Dr. Stout. Mr. Bachmann, it's good that you're standing there because I think you're up next.
He's got the next five items. The first one is our approval of our PA systems. And if you'll just go through each item number as you begin the next one. Thank you, Cory.
Dr. Eldridge, President Shackman, members of the board, it's good to see everyone tonight. The first item, 5P, is the upgrade of the PA system at Landry Elementary School. This campus is the second-to-last campus to use all of our other campuses. This is the second-to-last one that we're getting on our current PA system. We've had really good response so far on the PA upgrades that we've made as part of the 2023 bond program. The only complaint we've heard from staff members and students has been it's a little loud in a couple of spots, so we've had to turn it down a little bit. So that's a good, my kind of complaint. But otherwise, we've been real happy with the results so far. So we'll have this, once we do this one, we'll have one more campus to go, which we should be able to get started in the fall, and then, well, all the campuses will be on the current system. And I'll take any questions on this item. Okay?
Thank you. Good to go.
I believe the next item is the renovation package 5, 5Q. This is for Polk Middle School, Country Place Elementary, and Child Development Academy. At Polk, it includes restroom renovations, fine arts, bed, library renovation, new turf and track. At Country Place, it includes RTU replacement, special education, fine arts, STEM space and a playground. And at Child Development Academy includes the roof, some roofing, RTU replacement, air conditioning, and a fire alarm replacement. Any questions on this item?
I anticipated time of completion, especially at Polk.
We expect that we should be complete in the fall of 2026.
Okay, thank you. Board members, other questions there? All right, we'll move on.
All right. The next one is Title IX Concessions. This is providing a softball concession stand at Turner and at Kelly Field. The concession stand at Turner will be on the third base side, and the concession stand at Kelly Field will be on the first base side. We've walked aside with the athletic staff to look at the best locations. They agree that these two locations should work well for them. So we are ready to go with those, and we expect that they will be ready next spring.
Board members, any questions?
All right. Then we have the athletic facilities, Phase 2B. This is the renovation and/or replacement of tennis courts and tracks. It includes, for tennis, it includes resurfacing at Turner and Ranchview, a little bit of repair plus resurfacing at Smith, and then a replacement at Creekview, and that's all for tennis. For track, at Turner and Smith, it'll be a resurface, and for Creekview, it'll be a replacement. Creekview has some really lovely soil that has really done a number on those two facilities. So any questions on those items?
We had a concern from a community member about the balls going into the river at Creekview. Are we looking at any netting or anything to go on top of the tennis courts?
We do plan to replace the netting or basically windscreen like you might be familiar with around tennis courts. So there'd be just a standard type of windscreen netting around the tennis courts on the fence.
Anything extra or taller than usual?
At this time, we're not planning on anything out of the ordinary.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Cart?
You mentioned Creekview has a soil issue with the track around it. What is, what was the expected lifespan of the past, of the last track that's being replaced? Is it shorter, longer? What are we looking at?
We are, we'll be doing what's called chemical stabilization, where they inject a mixture that it stabilizes the soil, and they'll keep doing it until it reaches a certain level of stabilization. And once it reaches that level, then we'll begin to work on the new track. So that's how it will be stabilized going forward, and they plan to use the same process for the tennis courts.
Thanks for the info. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Yes.
I just have a question in general about these. I know at one point we had signage up that things were bond projects so that the public, if they were at these facilities and they saw activity happening, kind of just alerting the public that like, hey, this is your dollars at work. Are there any plans to consider that in any of these projects?
We don't have signage planned for at the moment, but we could certainly put up some small signs to let people know what's going on. That wouldn't be a problem.
Just something to consider. I know it's been done in the past. It's been several years, but we did have like some signs in different places to really just, just to make people aware that this is their dollars at work. Thank you.
And on to, I think, to the last. I'm sorry, Ms.
I was going to ask about the injections that you spoke of being environmentally friendly since we do have that stream.
Yes, ma'am. There are a couple of different solutions that are used, and they're both environmentally friendly.
Thank you.
Thank you, okay. And the last item?
And. Is that it? I think that's it.
Item 5T.
That's, yes, sorry, RTU purchase. This is the third round of RTU purchases under the 2023 bond. As you may remember, we have done this a couple of times before already in this bond cycle. We, our maintenance department is, has had better experience when we control which RTUs we get to make sure they're high-quality and easily maintained, and we've had good experience so far. So this will be the third round of that, and these will all be for Turner High School in this case.
If someone is watching online, RTU is what?
Rooftop unit or an air conditioner.
Right.
It's rooftop-mounted air conditioner.
Perfect. Any other questions? Thank you, Mr. Bachmann.
Yes, ma'am.
That concludes the administrative reports.
Board members, do we have any questions regarding the consent agenda items? Seeing none, I'm going to assume that we've got that solved. So, board members, we've reached the end of our agenda at 6:18 PM.
Good evening, everyone. I call this regular meeting of the Carrollton Farmers Branch ISD Board of Trustees to order at 7:00 PM on May 1st. Board members, district staff members, and members of the audience, you are all free to join me in standing as Tim Rubio from Covenant Church provides us with the message, followed by the pledges to the U.S. flag led by Eliana Garza-Rosas and the Texas flag, Carolyn Benavides.
If you all wouldn't mind bowing your heads. Heavenly Father, thank you for this wonderful night to celebrate so many scholars, so many leaders, wonderful, wonderful teachers and students. Father, I just want to thank you for this gathering, God. I know that we have plans, we have objectives, Lord, and so I'm reminded of Proverbs, it says, "Man makes plans, but God you order our steps." So we ask for wisdom tonight, we ask for your guidance, and we also thank you that we're able to celebrate those that have accomplished a lot tonight, and we honor them, we celebrate them tonight, and just have your way tonight. Let this meeting be fantastic. We pray this all in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic over which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On your Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you. As a district, we dedicate all of our efforts and resources to our goal of high expectations for all. The board uses this goal to guide all deliberations, decisions, and actions. You will get to see all of this in open session, with the exception of some items that may be discussed in closed session, as stipulated in Texas Government Code, Section 551, known as the Open Meetings Law. These items typically deal with personnel matters, consultation with our attorney, and real estate. For the record, board members present are Tara Hobachek, Kim Brady, Marjorie Barnes, Carolyn Benavides, Eliana Garza-Rojas, Cassandra Hatfield, and I'm Randy Shackman. We constitute a quorum and may conduct business on behalf of the district. Next item on our agenda is special presentations and recognitions, and I'm going to turn the meeting over to Karen Rodriguez.
Good evening, President Shackman, Dr. Eldridge, and esteemed members of the board. CFB ISD celebrated its outstanding educators at the annual Teacher of the Year banquet on April 17th. Tonight, we are excited to celebrate our elementary and secondary Teacher of the Year winners, who will represent CFB at the regional and potentially state and national competitions. Representing Farmers Branch Elementary School, our 2025 Elementary Teacher of the Year is Summer Garcia. Summer is a proud CFB ISD graduate. She is a second-grade bilingual teacher with five years of service in the district. Ms. Garcia, thank you for your dedication and for your exceptional work with our students. We are excited for you and appreciate you for all that you do, and I'm here to help you with your application, if you need that. Thank you. And now for our Secondary Teacher of the Year, Jonathan Cartray.
Oh, no.
A Law Academy teacher at Creekview High School, Mr. Cartray has dedicated 16 years to CFB ISD. His commitment to education is evident, as he is currently with his students at a Law Academy competition in Washington, DC. This evening, we appreciate his dedication to our students, and Mr. Shulak, if you would like to come up and accept his certificate? Please let him know that we appreciate him. And again, if we could just give our Teachers of the Year a big congratulations. Thank you all for all that you do. We're so proud of you. Now moving on to our student recognitions. In CFB, we have the privilege to serve talented and exceptional students, as you all know. This month, we are honored to highlight the Technology Student Association team from Barbara Bush Middle School. In only their second year competing at the state level, the team earned state champion titles in the following categories: website design, video game design, coding, inventions and innovations. More than 10,000 students compete in state competitions each year, making this a truly outstanding achievement. That's a big one, y'all. This June, the team will advance to the National TSA Competition in Nashville, Tennessee. Students, as I call your name, please make your way up to the front to be recognized before the board. And apologies if I mispronounce your name. Grishida Godwin, Nidya Kaparti, Kaziah Thomas, Varshini Somisetti, Danielle Williamson, Yeswant Puru Sothaman, Sarah Thomas, Pihu Gupta, Aki Ikbal, Soriana Irissari. Congratulations to all of these incredibly talented students, and I believe they have a special gift for our board members and Dr. Eldridge. So, students, feel free to approach the dais with their T-shirts.
Thank you so much, and congratulations.
Congratulations, students. Good luck at Nationals. Okay, so last but not least, our mascot competition. CFB held its second annual mascot competition during the week of April 14th. Campuses were encouraged to participate by posting their mascots on social media throughout the week promoting enrollment for the 2025-26 school year. We had 15 campuses participate this year, and we received more than 2,400 votes. With a total of 485 votes, if I can get a drum roll. Good Elementary School was our winner and returning champion. To celebrate the good gator, it's here with us tonight. Good Gator is here with us tonight, Azwara Sarah Rahimi, our social media ambassador for Good Elementary.
They all voted once, yeah.
All right, well, congratulations, Good Elementary. Thank you for showing our community that CFB is the place to be. That concludes tonight's recognitions.
What exciting times and great students. Bush students do, do you have a teacher or a sponsor that's here? And the principal is here. All right, awesome. Congratulations, and we look forward to hearing great things from you from Nationals. Next on our agenda is our president's report. I really only have one thing tonight. It is election season, and if you have not yet voted, you must vote on Saturday at your precinct location, not all over the district, but at your precinct location, and we want to encourage you to get out and vote. It's important for us all. Board members, would anyone like to give an update about the committee meeting that you serve on? Ms. Benavides.
Thank you. I serve on the Shack Committee.
I serve on the Shack Committee, and Ms. Rachel Freeman gave us an update on the PA system that has been updated district-wide and completion will be fall of 2025. Our second item is the backpack guidelines that we have been working on. It's ongoing, there's been nothing set in stone yet, but we'll continue to work on that. And then our recess weather/heat guidelines will be presented to the Board in June. That's all I have.
Thank you. Go ahead, Ms. Robach, too. Okay, let's start with one.
So we'll go alphabetical. Bond Oversight Committee, and I and Ms. Brady serve as the liaison to that district committee. The Bond Oversight Committee met on April 22nd. The package number five that we got a briefing on was reviewed with the committee, as well as package number three, which will later be presented to the Board. We also got an update on the fiber replacement project, which is progressing, that is district-wide as one of the bond projects. Sarah Rowland presented on an 18-plus program vision for some changes. They also reviewed some summer construction activities that would be happening in the district and the plans around that. And our next meeting, there was also a discussion about future bond activities, and then our next meeting will be July 22nd this summer. And that's it for that one.
Number two.
Number two, Governance Subcommittee, and that is myself and Mrs. Hatfield and Mrs. Barnes. We met on April 13th and April 27th. We spent that time reviewing some proposed policy changes that will later be presented to the Board, and we continued work on the Collaborative Vision 2030 Refresh. One of the last steps in this process was feedback from the DIC and from the, those that participated on the original CV 2030 Development Committee. Ms. Hatfield will lead this effort, and she is going to review the information under a later agenda item, as well as review next steps if it's approved. And then, just as a reminder, if there are other items that you would like from a policy review or Board operating procedures, if you'd like it reviewed by the Governance Committee for possible edit or consideration, all you need to do is reach out or send a note, and we will add that to the list, and per our committee guidelines, we'll meet within two weeks to review that.
Great, thank you. Any other? Yes, Ms. Garza-Rojas.
In regards to the Legislative Committee, House Bill 1178 passed the House Subcommittee with 13 As and zero Nays. It was sent to calendars on April 30th, so it should be heard on the House floor soon. The next step is the vote on the House floor, and then it'll go to Senate. And then, on behalf of the Board of Trustees, I want to extend a heartfelt thank you to the Carrollton Farmers Branch ISD Educational Foundation for hosting the incredible Teacher of the Year banquet. Your commitment to supporting education and celebrating educators makes a real difference, not just to those of us in the room, but to countless students and communities we serve every day. It was a wonderful reminder of the power of recognition. Thank you for valuing our teachers, for investing in excellence, and for giving us the opportunity to come together in celebration. Your generosity and vision inspire us to keep pushing forward, to keep giving our best, and to continue making a positive impact one student at a time. Thank you again.
Thank you, Ms. Garza-Rojas. Ms. Hatfield.
Yes, I have an update from the District Improvement Committee. I served as the Board Liaison on that committee, and they met on Monday, the 21st. And in that meeting, they received an update on our vision and priorities, as well as myself providing an update on the strategic plan and giving an overview of the survey that they were being asked to take. Mr. Mersch gave an attendance and enrollment update. Carla gave a budget update. Hope gave a TEA accountability update. Kim gave an instructional update. There were a lot of updates, there was a lot of information, if you can't tell. And then, they went into breakout rooms, and individually in the breakout rooms, discussed the district improvement plan and goals that are being tracked, monitored, and the outcomes of those in the progress monitoring. And so, it was a great meeting and a lot of input from several team members.
Thank you, sounds good. That appears to be all the committee update reports. Dr. Eldridge, I believe District Announcements is next.
Okay, I have quite a few. Dr. Cartray, that our Secondary Teacher of the Year is not here today because he is in Washington, D.C., and we found out that they, our Creekview moot court, won the national championship. So, thank you, Leon, for sending me that update so quickly. Wow, what a great, what a great honor for our school district. And this afternoon, we found out that a junior, Devon Scott, at Ranchview High School, competed in the UIL 4A Track and Field State Championship in Austin, and he won fifth place. So that's amazing, and the triple jump. Want to thank Stacy and our PTA Council for our Lifetime Achievement Award Celebration, and you know it's a well-attended event when we run out of plates, and the food was great. And just to see everybody celebrated for all the volunteer efforts that the PTA campuses have given and all your work. And she did tell me she was coming back as the president. So it's been an honor to work with you and all of your team, and what a great event to celebrate how much involved our campuses are with volunteers. So thank you all so much. And again, Ms. Garza-Rojas took my thank you to Mary Lovell and our Education Foundation for our Teacher of the Year. When I was looking at this, we had over 40 individual and corporate sponsors to celebrate our teachers, and I think for our first year partnering together, it was a huge success. So, you know, it was not only fun, but it was just, it was such a great community partnership as well, that our community gets to see how hard our teachers work. So, really want to thank that. Our retirement luncheon that we had yesterday, you know, is bittersweet. We honor our teachers that have, and our employees that have spent so much time with us, but their dedication just doesn't go unnoticed. And so we had a great luncheon yesterday with, and I shared this data yesterday, that it was a combined of 1,522 years of service, and that is just, when you think of numbers, it was an incredible event. If you haven't met Officer Chicago at Newman Smith High School, his real name is Eugene Turner. And every time I go in there, he gives a sticker, and he has informed us that he has now written a children's book. So it's called Officer Chicago's Do's and Don'ts, and it's got safety tips and life lessons. And so, he was featured in the branch herald, and we can't wait for his book to come out, and he can do some autograph signings. So, what a great thing that he's pouring into kids to give back. And for all of you, next week is Teacher Appreciation Week, and so we thank all of those that serve our students. So with a note of thank you, we really need to constantly appreciate our teachers that do the work every day. So, that's all I have.
Thank you very much. We do appreciate all of our staff, and our teachers make a difference in kids' lives every day. Stacy, update from PTA.
Hello, Dr. Eldridge, President Shackman, our esteemed Board. I'm still Stacy Homan, President of the CFB Council of PTAs, and I'm going to start, as we always do, with the PTA motto, "To make every child's potential a reality by engaging and empowering families and communities to advocate for all children." And I want to add another quote that I saw today. I think the person that printed it said it was from ChatGPT, but it's a good one, so we're going to go with it. "Volunteering with the PTA isn't just about giving time, it's about shaping the future one child, one classroom, and one community at a time." And I think that's very apropos for all the thinking of volunteers we're doing. I want to thank everyone who came to our School Board Candidate Forum and our Lifetime Member Award Ceremony. It is always inspiring to be around so many dedicated volunteers who are determined to make an impact on our children and their schools. As a parent of a graduating senior and a ninth grader, because if she sees this, she'll be upset if I left her out, I have seen this in action for 13 years in CFB ISD, and it sets us apart from many other districts. With that said, our last delegate meeting of the year will be on Wednesday, May 14th, at 11:30 a.m. here in this room. We have managed to now fill our Executive Board in many key positions. We still do have some Standing Committee Chair positions open in Communications, Hospitality, Healthy Lifestyles, and Community Outreach. If anyone is interested, please reach out to me or send an email to info@cfbpta.org. We really would love to have some more help, or if you just want to be on a committee, you can reach out for that as well. I would also like to make a shout-out to the principals to please include your PTAs in upcoming Welcome to Campus sessions at your schools. It is important to let them know that we exist on your campus and give them a friendly face and some contact information for them to reach out to. So if anyone can encourage on your campuses to include PTAs in these events, we'd really appreciate it. Be prepared for launch this summer, that's the huge Texas PTA Training Event. It is in Dallas again at the Hilton Anatole, July 19th to 21st. Registration is now open, and every school that sends someone can bring an administrator for free. These applications are available at the Texas PTA website, so please use your free registrations and come to launch this summer. For our April Challenge, we ask schools to send us information on how they showed appreciation. And before I get to that, I want to do a special recognition that we don't have an award for, because we found out about it today. One of our students at McCoy Elementary has won the National Award of Merit for Reflections. It's in the primary literature, so that's pre-K through second grade, and it is Venisha Sunke, and we will recognize her properly later, but I found out about this today, so I didn't want to leave it out of the address. That's a huge deal. Okay, so for our April Challenge, we ask schools to send us information on how they showed appreciation. One elementary school and one high school both showed appreciation through social media campaigns and videos, as well as appreciation events held throughout the year. Our primary school winner, and I left my awards over there, Diane, sorry. Our primary school winner is Rainwater Elementary School. And we had a secondary school entry this time. Creekview High School. I'm not allowing that. So, congratulations, Creekview High School. Good job. We had a second school achieve our voice, sorry, we had a second school achieve our Voice for Every Child Platinum Award. That means there's at least one member on the PTA for every student at that school, and that is Rosemead Elementary School. Came in a box rolled up, I didn't have time to stretch it. But you'll be able to hang that at your school. So congratulations, that's a huge, huge deal. And as always, thank you for supporting PTA, we do appreciate it.
Thank you, Mrs. Homan. PTA continues to be such an important part of our district, and excited to hear that you're going to continue as President. We look forward to great success the coming year. And now an update from the Education Foundation.
Wow, it's hard to follow that. President Shackman, members of the Board, Dr. Eldridge, and community members. My name is Mary Lovell, and I am honored to serve as Chair of the Educational Foundation for our district and chair this brief foundation report. My candle burns at both ends. It will not last the night, but ah, my foes and oh, my friends, it gives a lovely light. Fans of Edna St. Vincent Millay will recognize this verse from First Fig. "Your EF has been burning its candle at both ends, producing what we hope is some lovely light for our community." I will share briefly on three important achievements. First of all, the Teacher of the Year. We were privileged to present this celebration. It was underwritten by community partners who want to show our educators how much they appreciate them, and we certainly hope they felt that love that night. A very special thank you to each of them who stepped up, and particularly El Rincon and Credit Union of Texas, who were $10,000 donors. We have already received our first major donor for next year's event, which will be April 16th. So mark your calendars, anybody who wants to support the event, please let me or Donna know, we'll make it really easy for you to support us in 2016, or 2026, or 2027, should your financial calendar require splitting it. As a, as a result of this event, we will be able to fund fully our Great Start Grants, which we announced and hope to win. Each campus will, each campus and center will receive $1,000 as a result of this event for the first day of school. They'll receive it before the first day of school. Donna will make sure that happens. The second thing we've been burning our candle bright with is our student scholarships. We received 336 student applications, an increase of 30% from last year, and the awarding of 79 scholarships to deserving students has already begun. Our Board recently approved awarding more funds than ever before. $105,850 will be awarded to graduating seniors, and we hope they claim it. It's there for them. Finally, our literacy initiative, book vending machines. The EF itself is awarding two book vending machines, and the winning campuses will be notified before the last day of school, so stay tuned for that great news. Our hope is to, our hope continues to have machines installed in every campus and in these two campuses before the end of, before the new school year begins. And that concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Lovell. It was a great event, and you should be so proud of the good work done by all of your team from the Education Foundation supporting our Teachers of the Year. I believe that concludes our agenda item. The next item on our agenda would be Audience for Guests. We had no one who signed up or indicated they were going to come and be part of that and speak, so we'll go straight to our next item on the agenda, which is Non-Auction Items for Discussion. First item is A, our TEA Rating Update. Ms. Keen.
Good evening, Dr. Eldridge, President Shackman, and members of the Board. Thank you for the opportunity tonight to share an update on the 2023 and projected 2024 A- through F accountability ratings. The information shared tonight reflects student performance in CFB from the 2022 to 23 school year, as well as the 23-24 school year. Over these last several years, we have presented the assessment results to you all, and we've provided annual reports, which reflects all that data. That is now going to be found within our accountability system. They've been applied now. And so, keep in mind that the accountability system is complex, and it contains a lot of calculations and a lot of scaling. And so my goal tonight is to provide you with updates to a system that I could literally spend four to five hours talking to you about. So metaphorically, you know, we're not talking about a new paint job on a car, we're talking about a whole new engine with a lot of parts that were modified to them. And so, stay with me as I, I hope to explain this well. It's important to understand that the accountability system is made up of three separate domains. Domain one is student achievement, which includes CCMR and graduation rates at the high school level, along with star performance, which is apparent in all levels in terms of domain one. Domain two is school progress, which has two parts, includes student growth and relative performance. And then domain three is closing the gaps, which is outlined and modified by the federal government. So there are raw calculation scores within each domain that are then scaled. And so it's the scaled score that's going to produce a letter grade, and it's really important, as y'all look at the reports, that you understand that it's a scaling that leads to a letter, because you're going to see calculation numbers that don't match the scaling. And so, for example, when you look at a domain, there's going to be a raw calculation, and then a component score, and then a scaled score as well. And so the scaled score is what determines that letter grade. So, let me take you back. In the spring of 2023, the Annual Accountability Manual was set to be released. However, it was delayed due to significant changes coming in the accountability system and feedback that TEA did receive at that time. And so please know that an accountability refresh is not uncommon, they do occur every five years, but this one was so significant, and the time- They do occur every five years, but this one was so significant, and the timeliness of the communication is which was what was in question at this time. And so in August of 2023, TEA did not publish those ratings initially, which they always come out in August. And so by August 2023, the ratings had not come out, which led to, in October, there was a temporary and permanent injunction that was filed by 121 districts across the state. And so that led to kind of the question of, is there now authority to retroactively issue ratings based on a manual that wasn't out in time that districts can't do anything about? And so it's really important to understand that that is what that October 22, excuse me, October 2023 led to, was the questioning of the timeliness of the reports. Then in March of 2024, the state made sure to release the 2024 Accountability Manual on time, and in fact, early for that school year. And so it was published, and then on the eve of the 2024 ratings, as y'all will remember from last August, there was a handful of district, districts that did file a separate restraining order, but this time on the grounds of questioning the star, the star test itself, so the actual assessment tool. So unrelated to the timeliness of the refresh information, and this was strictly based on the assessment that was being used. Which leads us to, or you know, earlier this month, on April 3rd, which is when the 14th Court of Appeals was finally able to convene, and then they decided that TEA does in fact have the authority to release the 2023 ratings. And so my prediction is that the 2024 ratings are right behind it. So stay tuned for that. But I did want to walk you all through, and so that way when you all are talking to our community members, you've got some key talking points, that there were significant changes to the 2023 system that were implemented. So part of the refresh included an update to cut points and targets, and that was across all domains. And that was to ensure that schools were meeting statutory requirements and reflecting appropriate goals for students post-COVID. Also, a significant change was to the CCMR indicators within domain one. So they implemented adjusting the industry-based certifications, or what we call IBCs, in their requirements. And just so you guys are aware, TEA did cap some of those IBC types, but CFP had been preemptive enough in years past that we did not see an issue with that. We'd already been ahead of the news in terms of what workforce readiness programs are efficient for our students, and so we didn't necessarily see a change there for us in terms of IBCs. But I will share with you guys the change that we did see, along with all of the other districts in this state. They also made changes, significant changes in domain two for growth. They made a way to recognize more growth for students through a transition table and included recognition of successful accelerated learning. And then additionally, they narrowed the focus within closing the gaps by identifying supergroups, and they provided a differentiation through a zero-to-four-point methodology. But most significantly, the overall district rating methodology changed to using a proportional weighted average of campus ratings instead of looking at campuses individually and equally, meaning the overall district rating used to be the average of all 36 campuses. So each campus was 1/36 of the district rating. And we have now moved to campuses based on their enrollment sizes. So our biggest campuses, such as Turner and Smith, which have the largest enrollment sizes, make up to close, close to 25% of the district's overall rating. And so that's a significant shift from years prior. So here is the 2022 District Accountability Report that's provided by TEA, and it reflects the 21-22 school year assessment data. This report provides the different component scores and scaled scores of each domain. And as I mentioned, this accountability system is complex, and I'd be happy to lead you through all of the intricacies of the calculation methodology, which leads us to our component scores and then to our scaled scores at a later date. Notice, I did include the information from the school year, which showed that we had 71% of our students earned approach grade level or above when we look at all of our Here, I want to draw your attention to an example within domain one. Notice that domain one does include star performance, and then at the high schools, it includes the college career and military readiness and the graduation rate, which is why that's a part of our district report here. Our component score was a 45 and was scaled to a 76, and so this is important when we look here now at this 2023 report. This is the report that came out to districts on April 17th. And remember, since the overall district rating methodology has shifted to reflect the culmination of our campuses' domains, which is based on their size of enrollment, you'll notice that our scaled score did not change. So please know, while it's not listed, the domain one student achievement for the district rating still does reflect star performance, CCMR, and the graduation rate at the high school level. But due to enrollment sizes, our high schools make up 41% of the overall ratings. So keep in mind, this table here shows that our component score actually did increase by two points, which was a result of a 5% increase in our star performance that school year. So again, if you were to look at our TAPER report, you would see in all subjects, all grades, we had a 71% in 2022, and that grew to 76% in the next school year. However, the reports are going to look different because it used to be, everything was calculated to have a component score, and now we only see a scaled score because it's a scaling of that weighted methodology from all of the campuses. Okay? How are we doing? Are we tracking? Okay. I know you guys, it's, it is a lot. So let me take you right over here. So this is a summary of the methodology changes, and I want to emphasize the word summary. It is not every single point within each of these areas, but it is a summary of the major impact of changes. So we talked about cut points and target shifting in domain one. However, there weren't changes in the actual calculations within domain one or the scaling of those scores. And so I wanted to make sure that you guys knew that, that when we're looking at calculation and that grading or scaling, that that's different from the overall methodology. Okay? In CCMR, though, there was a minor change to the calculation of the number of students receiving certain types of IBCs, like I'd mentioned, but overall, the calculation was very similar in years past, which ultimately just defines what's the percentage of our students who leave us post-secondary ready for a college, a career, or the military. However, what I am calling a humongous change was on the scaling side, and this is very important. In the past, I've shared in our House Bill III updates that the scaled score of an A shifted from a 60 to an 88. So our high schools, which are now our highly, highest enrolled campuses, are now being impacted by a significant shift from what used to be an A, which was a 60 in CCMR, all the way up to an 88%. So that means, when you shift the scale that much and it's impacting our biggest campuses, we're going to see a significant, humongous change in our overall district rating. For academic growth, this calculation, as they looked at new ways to make sure that we are accounting for more students to have growth, this is a positive change. And so therefore, because they added new ways to see more growth, the scaling then had to be adjusted there. For relative performance, there weren't changes in relative performance. Just a reminder to you all, relative performance is how did our campus do compared to campuses that look like it in other districts or across the state that have the same ECO-DIS percentage? And so what they do with that, that's called domain two B, they look at how is each campus, how did they look, you know, compared to other campuses like it? And then that also produces a scaled score, and then, you know, I could easily get into the weeds here, I'm really trying hard not to. That's where this takes us, is basically if relative performance is our highest area, it pulls forward. But just so you guys know, there were no changes in terms of calculations there, but at the high school level, each component scaled and then averaged differently than it had in the past. And then domain three, closing the gaps, was substantially reconfigured. The methodology was moved to a zero-to-four-point scale instead of counting the number or of yes or no's across sub-populations. In other words, was there enough growth here? Yes or no? And if you had enough yeses, you got a certain number of points, and now it's a zero-to-four-point methodology, which is intended to, in fact, close the gaps on our students who need support. And so that's why there was a significant shift there as well. As you see, that there are lots of changes here, and they all came right at once with that new paint job that we got. So if you are curious to know how surrounding districts were affected by the change in methodology, I've listed that information here. You know, a discussion for another day would be to include, to look at the trends across all the data, to be sure that we're seeing the full picture. I've spent a lot of time looking at TexasSchools.gov, and you can see, if you visit there, that there are many different data points that provide a lot of variation to the districts that you do see here. So we are going to spend some time in this table, which does provide a year-over-year summary of campus ratings. So starting in 2022, which was the 21-22 school year data, we had seven A campuses and 25 B campuses. You'll see that seven campuses represent 19.4% of the district. Remember, the methodology then was that every campus was 1/36 of the district rating, as each campus was equally rated. The state then provided the 2022 What If rating column. So if you were to go to TexasSchools.gov right now, you would see listed 2022, the 2022 What If, along with the 2023. And so what the state did here, in an attempt to show you apples to apples, because what we have is from 2022, we can call those apples, and then we see in 2023, we're definitely going to call bananas. But what they're attempting to do is to, to tell you, if you took the 2021-22 school year data and you put it into the new methodology, then what would have been in 2022 is this What If column. So if that data from 21-22 had occurred in 2023, then our rating would have shifted to an 81 or a B. Again, it's shifting from evenly weighted campuses to weighted by, proportionally weighted by enrollment. So the actual 2023 ratings with the 22-23 school year data shows the impact of the new campus enrollment weighting. Notice that we saw an increase in A campuses, but also an increase in C and D campuses, which is a result of the many changes that I just walked us through. So we have to remember that since the weighted enrollment is reflected in 2023, we see that the eight D campuses represent 30% of the district due to the sizes of those campuses. And so two of our largest campuses had bumped down in that year due to the changes in CCMR, right? We went from, used to be a 60 was an A, now it has to be an 88, and so everything scales accordingly. There were also changes in domain two and three as well that impacted our campuses. So lastly, here in 2024, over half of our campuses have a projected A or B rating. You'll also notice that those 20 A and B campuses only account for 40% of the overall district rating due to their enrollment sizes. So we'll, we can take a look at the 13 C campuses that are representing only a third of the district, that those 13 campuses have the enrollment weight of over half. So 55.4% of the district rating is coming from a third of our campuses there. So we have a huge shift in methodology changes, which make those C campuses more significant. So you'll notice here that decrease in the number of D campuses from 2023 to 2024. You know, notice that almost a third of the district rating from those Ds in 2023 due to the large campuses that received the D rating. So our largest campuses moved from the D to a C in 2024, and so we can see the influx of that weight. And so now those three campuses that are left only account for 4.6% of the rating, projected rating for 2024. So all of that to say, the number of students in our buildings drives the weight of each of these campuses. So what I want to ensure that the board and the community understand tonight is that the engine has changed. We're still driving a car, we have a fresh paint job, but also a whole new engine, and those engine parts are going to continue to be tweaked as we are coming upon, you know, we're getting ready for another refresh here in the next couple of years. And so it's also important that the community knows that two full school years have passed. We're just now finishing up star testing this week. This school year has 17 days left, and we're just now getting these 2023 ratings. And so it's important to know that our campuses and our district leadership, we've had, you know, we've had improvement plans, we've worked on areas to address our needs, and worked to celebrate areas of success for our staff and our students. And so while we hadn't received official ratings from TEA, you know, our department works with our campus leadership to review their calculations each year and identify areas throughout the year to track the progress of our students. But here are tonight's highlights for the community. You know, 56% of schools are projected to have an A or a B rating in 2024. Five out of our six high schools maintained or increased their overall rating from 2023, which we saw the implication there in terms of how that, how that impacts us. And then despite the threshold increase for achieving an A in CCMR from a score of 60 to 88, I shared with you all back at the annual report and in October of last year, that we are projected to have a B rating in CCMR, an almost A in CCMR, which surpasses the initial goal set all those years ago to be 60% by 2030 for our college career and military readiness indicators. We have demonstrated growth in key academic areas that I wanted to just remind you all of tonight. We saw gains in all subjects, reading and social studies, and MEAT's grade level or above, as well as gains in our master's performance level for the same categories. And all that information can be located on the TAPER report. The district's 2024 graduation rate of 94.1% exceeded the state and regional percentages. And just another reminder that the district exceeded the state and regional percentages in all tested subject areas for our elementary campuses. So we continue to have the best community of educators and families in the metroplex. And so as we are literally wrapping up another school year this month, we're incredibly thankful to the work of our campus administrators who support our teachers, and those teachers turn around and support our students and their families. And so we just want to give a huge thank you to the work that they're doing, as we know the stories that y'all are experiencing every day are your lives. And while this is a letter grade, we know that our community is just worth so much more than that. And so we want to thank you for the work that y'all are doing. Are there any questions at this time that I can answer for you tonight?
Thank you, Ms. Keen. It's a great report. Board members' questions? Yes, Garcia-Ross.
Thank you so much for your presentation. Just for clarification with the community, what does accountability refresh mean?
Oh, great. So in 2022, when I kept saying the old methodology, it's essentially meaning all of those changes that I summarized is what we, the state deemed as a refresh, basically meaning a lot of things are changing, and we're looking at a lot of different areas to make shifts and adjustments. And so it's just a phrase to use, that there was a refresh to the accountability system. And so then in 2028, there's going to be another refresh or another way to look at things and see what needs to be tweaked to ensure that gaps are closing across all schools in the state, and so that all schools are driving their student achievement forward.
And that is coming from TEA, am I correct?
The refresh?
Yes, all of that is coming from the Texas Education Agency, not controlled by the school district.
Not controlled by the school district, yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Yes, thanks. Yes, ma'am.
I know I'm pushing it, but when will we have projections for 2025 school, school ratings?
Ooh. Well, so what we would have to have to even get started on that is the outcome of our star testing. That finishes tomorrow. Tomorrow's our last day of makeup testing for math, and so we will get early, early, early results for high school at the end of the month, and then on the 30th is when we'll get three through eight. So at that point in time, I will very excitedly be gathering all the data that I can and start seeing how many tests were approaches plus MEATs plus masters divided by three, and we're going to start cranking some numbers out.
That'd be great. Thank you. Thank you.
Ms. Benavides?
Thank you. I was just wondering, since 1/36 for our campuses encompasses that rating, how will the foreclosures impact that? how will the foreclosures impact that?
So now that every campus is looked at by its weighted enrollment, right? So it'll be weighted based on enrollment. It's just going to look at who our campuses are, how many students are there. So as we've consolidated and students have moved, we're going to see some of our campuses that had a smaller weight actually grow, which actually is a great point that you didn't ask me just now. But a good thing for y'all to know as y'all are talking to the community is that every year, the weight of a campus is going to shift based on enrollment. And so as students, you know, choose to go to Smith more than they choose to go to Turner, or they flip-flop or vice versa, we're going to see a shift there in which one is bigger in our overall rating.
And where you said the 41% of our rating is high schools, what is the percentage for junior high? Or is that a factor in?
That is a factor. I did not memorize that number, but I can find that out and get that to you.
Just wondering, since we're losing one.
I can tell you our elementary campuses are right around 2% each.
Okay.
They're almost, they're almost 5% each at the middle school. Thank you, Ms. Holcomb.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Great question.
Thank you, Ms. Keen, for your presentation. You know I nerd out on these things. I think that we also need to celebrate the fact that our 2024 ratings show we decreased the number of D-rated schools by five. That continues to show that whether ratings are out or not, that district leadership and campus leadership is doing what they need to do for children and taking care of our kids. And I just want the community to remember that it is not state accountability ratings that drives the work of this district. It's the kids that are in these seats and the work that we do every day with our teachers. And that is something to celebrate. And while the ratings and it's 2023 came out and there's frustration because letters are frustrating to people, I think we need to recognize as a community that there is a lot of great work and we need to support our educators and champion the work that they're doing on a daily basis. And also remember that that is why we have campus improvement plans and we have district improvement plans. And we monitor those regularly because it is our goal to have high achievement for all of our kids. So I just want to reiterate the fact that we are doing great work for kids in this district, regardless of this rating. And I can't wait to see the 2025 ratings because let us not forget that we had a pandemic and we are still seeing student achievement results as the result of the pandemic. Thank you.
Questions? Ms. Keen, thank you very much. I also believe that some of the numbers that we're seeing in improvements reflects on the good work that's been done by our curriculum and planning people and the implementation of some new curriculums and strategies across the board. And it's making a difference. And thank you for all that you're doing in there.
Thank you. Thank y'all.
Next, we have a consolidation update. Mr. Marsh?
Good evening, President Shackman, Dr. Eldridge, members of the board. Tonight, we are honored to provide an update on the progress of our campus consolidation efforts. Efforts that reflect not only strategic planning, but also incredible amount of coordination, compassion, and commitment from every department across this district. This has not been easy work. Change of this magnitude is never easy. And yet, what was carried through is a shared focus on doing what's best for students, staff, and families every step of the way. From the earliest planning stages to our most recent pop-up registration events, our goal has remained consistent to deliver a transition that is thoughtful, student-centered, and grounded in support. As we walk through this update, I hope that it's clear that behind every timeline, every checklist, and every transferred staff member, that there has been a commitment to people first. We are proud of what we have accomplished so far, and we know that there is still work ahead and there is always room for improvement. You will receive an update from Student Services, Communications, Technology, Operations, Leadership and Learning, Special Services, and HR. We thank you for your continued trust and support as we navigate this together. We will begin our presentation tonight with Executive Director Joe Gillan.
Thank you, Dr. Eldridge, for the opportunity to serve in Student Services. Our goal is to provide the best possible support and customer service to our parents and students. One of the key initiatives supporting the objective has been the pop-up registration events that have been held at the four consolidated campuses. We are appreciative of the teamwork and collaboration to make these events possible. You can see that we had transportation up there at the top with the stop sign. They were present at all of our pop-up registrations. We had support from our nurses for immunizations. We had support there from the YMCA and then also from our food services. We had pop-up registrations at Ferno, McCoy, Central, and Long. And you can see the dates accordingly. Our Student Services enrollment for the district is up 4%. In addition, Student Services has directly assisted 513 families so far with registration, transfer requests, and general enrollment. District enrollment is up over 4% compared to last year. Enrollment stats are compiled each Friday. So we will have an update tomorrow. Student Services has effectively worked with communication and notification, dedicated transition support, personalized family support, and the transfer process. With the communication and notification, there has been a comprehensive, multi-channel communication plan, including announcements, letters, website updates, and direct notifications. This was to ensure all stakeholders were informed. Thank you, Communication Team, for your special and wonderful support. The dedicated transition support. We established trained transition contacts at each impacted campus to provide direct assistance to our families. With personalized family support, we had a range of support, including counseling services and resources. And families can access a dedicated inquiry email. Enroll@cfbisd.edu for assistance. The transfer process. We launched a parent-friendly online transfer portal and prioritized placement for students from the consolidation campuses. We have ensured timely records transfers for all affected students. I'd like to take a moment to inform any families who have not yet enrolled that there is still an opportunity to receive a FastPass for registration. This is so cool. I want to express appreciation for the high level of collaboration by our staff and community. And I will click on the FastPass so that you can see all the great and wonderful opportunities. So the FastPass is back for the 25-26 school year. Register early to take advantage of the FastPass benefits. The campus with the highest percentage of students registered by May 9, 2025 will win one pair of wireless earbuds for each registered student. Students who register by May 9 will receive a digital CFB FastPass upon completion of enrollment and after the first day of school. FastPass holders will be entered into a drawing to win one of the following prizes if registered by May 9. This is so cool. An HD drone with camera, Beats by Dr. Dre solo three headphones, a Schwinn bicycle, and a 12-inch Huffy bicycle. So now I want to turn this over to our Chief Communications Officer, Karen Rodriguez. Karen?
Good evening again. So for the communications piece, Ms. Gillan alluded to having multiple platforms. So our team also wanted to provide support to the staff at the campuses. So we provided scripts and written templates to help provide a unified message and streamlining message and also so that they didn't have to think about, you know, it was an emotional time. So we wanted to give them, hey, here you go. You can edit it, but we wanted to provide that support. We also provided guidance and support for their social media teams and for the campus webmasters. So those are just some examples of what we provided for the schools. We also helped collaborate with several departments to communicate updates and events via Parent Square, the district website, social media, and local media. So if you see here, we've got a website where we have the four schools that were recommended for consolidation. And so if you click on there, we updated those websites in order to show their farewell events. We also sent information about the pop-up events, the welcome events that are coming up. That was sent out yesterday. We also had a pre-K nights. We helped push that out. And I'm trying to think of other events that we... Oh, the School Locator Map Updates. We also helped promote that as well. We also coordinated and designed the Staff Relocation Toolkit for Principals and Staff. And these are for the four campuses. So we gathered the information. We worked with several departments. We branded the information and provided the toolkit to be presented. Ms. Holcomb will go a little bit more in depth about that principal or the Staff Relocation Toolkit. But our team was here to help provide support in any way that we could. So at this moment, I will... Oh, I'm so sorry. I will hand it off to Dr. Stout.
So at first, we're focusing on the transition for students and staff. We take elementary devices, one-to-one devices back from the students at the end of every school year. This year, we're also doing that for the middle school students at Long. And then when they move to their new campus, they will get their devices reissued that are customized for that particular campus. For teachers, when we had our meeting with the principals that were consolidated, I brought my laptop and a charger to that meeting. And when I spoke to the principals, I held up the laptop and the charger and said, this is all your teachers are going to be responsible for. So at the end of the year, when they leave the campus for the summer, then they take their laptop and their charger with them. If they're in one of the grade levels that have one-to-one iPads and that they were issued an iPad, then they can take their iPad and their charger as well. Other than that, our little technology gremlins are going to take care of everything else for them. We will go ahead and have the boards, the document cameras, the, all of the other classroom technology, their docs, their monitors, their keyboards, their maps, all of that. We will make sure that their new classroom or their new office or their new workspace has that. Because other than the laptop, all of that other technology is not assigned to the teacher. It's actually assigned to the learning space. We are already, our technicians have gone out and walked the campuses that are getting new classrooms or are turning spaces into instructional spaces now and to make sure they're already inventorying, they're already making sure that all of those classrooms are going to have exactly what they need for when the teachers return in the end of July. At the campus level, this is the library services part of our department. They are teachers. The instructional materials are going to be left in the cafeteria. And Ms. Holcomb will go into greater detail about that. Over the summer, they will be categorized and then labeled to be sent to the receiving campus where that classroom, that set of classroom instructional materials is needed. Ms. Niedabitz has been working with the campus principals, saying, okay, you know, you're getting extra grade levels, let's say an extra third grade class. What do you have at the campus? And then what, you know, what do I need to make sure gets delivered? The goal for that is to have all of those deliveries completed by the end of June. That also talks about the campuses that are moving their pre-K programs and/or their bilingual programs. So it's not just impacting those four campuses. We also have a number of other elementary schools where several classrooms worth of materials are picking up out of that campus and transitioning to another one. Library collections also. She's focusing on Central immediately and getting that ready because Turner High School's going to have a pop-up library in that space next year. And then the other campuses are going to get... Their materials are going to be packed up. What they're doing with the library collections is they are... The materials that are still in current usable, good shape are going to be reissued to other campuses and reused throughout the district. But she needs to put them together and decide. For example, there's an elementary school that's getting several classes of pre-K that had not had pre-K previously. Those pre-K books are going to be picked up and from a consolidated campus and are going to be rebarcoded, put in the system and given to that new campus so that those students have those resources. And the last aspect, the network equipment. There is a certain amount of equipment that is going to maintain or is going to be maintained in the building for a short amount of time so that it can still operate. The security cameras, the door access, the badge door access and whatnot. The equipment that is not, the infrastructure wireless and the other equipment that is in the walls or mounted to the walls that is not specifically required to run those cameras or the, you know, for the security purposes. We're going to evaluate it. And what is reusable, we're going to go ahead and reissue to the other campuses. When it comes time to close, completely close down a building, that, close to that date is when we'll go in and strip the rest of the skeleton network out of that campus. So we're reusing, we're evaluating and reusing everything possible that can be reissued. Thank you. And I'll turn it over to Mr. Moore.
Thank you, Mr. Shackman, trustees, Dr. Eldridge. Talk through some, I've got three slides. I wanted to talk through some pieces of the operations approach, kind of touch on what we're providing primarily through moving support, but then also touch on the impact that it's had on operations. Because when you think of our group, it's one that's typically there to support through moves and assistance and packing. But we've also been touched by the consolidation as well and how that's working with us with inventories. First thing I wanted to touch on regarding the move support that I referenced, you see there, that's the timeline that was shared at the principals' meeting in early April. And that was put together by Ms. Holcomb. You'll hear some more of what they've done shortly with her piece of this presentation. But that's the timeline that was shared. The week of April 7, we delivered packing materials through facilities. That was to the campuses. And that was based on staff counts. The initial count that we went with was 10 boxes per staff member. And that was after talking to four districts who have gone through this. Two gave 10, two gave more than 10. The two that gave more than 10 said, go with 10. And so we went with 10. And that is, of course, if there are more needs than just 10 boxes, we're accommodating that as well. To date, there's only been one campus within that month that has reached out and asked for more than the allotment on the pallet that was delivered. for more than the allotment on the pallet that was delivered. But April and May, those are the two months that the packing, the purging, the labeling of the boxes. And again, Ms. Holcomb and her group have done a wonderful job with inventorying, color coding, assisting with labels, packing materials and those things as far as helping us get that information out. May 23rd is the packing deadline. It's also the last day of school. June and July, that's the facilities moving window for the facilities group to get the materials moved from the campus where they're located to their new location. And then July 28th, the materials will be available in the teaching locations for move-in and setup. That's from April 7 to May 23rd, that's about seven full weeks, Monday through Friday, if you will, for packing. And then that's also six weekends, six full weekends for the packing. With regard to staffing, as it's impacted the operations group, you see there, we worked with human resources. Dr. Smoskus, Jerry Martinez, they let us work with them to determine the best placement for the employees. You know, it's a little specialty, if you will, the nurses, student nutrition staff, safety and security. We worked with them to get the... Those individuals placed in a place that was good for them and also good for the department. The total number of staff moves, I think that's right at 50 as far as staffing goes with regard to those five departments that were impacted by the consolidation with employment. That next slide, we are in the process of reviewing and updating the inventory of our materials and our supplies from the consolidated campuses. You can see there that we are currently... We've more than 5,500 items have been inventoried excluding that line there on the facilities. That is not among the 5,500. So I'm not going to read through all of that. You can breathe a sigh of relief, but I did want you all to see kind of what we have gone through and what we are inventorying from the operations vantage point. And these are items that will either be repurposed in whole, they could be parted, they can be stored, warehoused. And so that's what we will be recirculating out throughout the district within the locations where those departments are operating. And then the last slide, I didn't mention transportation specifically because, you know, it's not included on the other slides because it's not at a campus. And so the... It's inventory and its supplies are not necessarily at a campus location, but it is impacted through the consolidation. And we anticipate routing efficiency to improve because we also anticipate fewer regular education routes at this point as we're balancing out the planning for next year. Now, that's very much in the infancy stages, if you will. But while we balance out that planning, what I mean by that is if you remember, for instance, Freeman, the Freeman attendance zone, the southwesternmost portion, students at Freeman pass two elementary schools, they pass three major highways, two interstates. We were able to, within the rezone, get several students from Freeman closer to their actual home campus in that southwestern portion, Los Colinas, Lavalita. And so we were able to condense routes in the Freeman. However, Central, we are going to introduce routes into Central so students don't have to cross Beltline and don't have to cross Josie. So while we're working through that balancing act, right now, we're trending to fewer regular education routes. Crossing guards, another aspect that we're looking at with transportation, that's in process, talking to the city of Carrollton. Of course, the city's managed the crossing guards, but that specific outline there, that's four different crossing guards. Currently, there are two at the Frenault and Peters Colony intersection, looking at shifting those to Peters Colony and Josie. That would assist the students transitioning from Frenault to Davis, also would assist Long to Blalack as far as those who might be walking. One potential, Perry Pleasant Run, move that to Pleasant Run and Josie. That's to assist the Central to McLaughlin Strickland students who might not ride the bus. Again, I'd mentioned we're going to have routes for that, but it would be an extra precaution if we could relocate a crossing guard there. Same for potentially one currently at Perry and Beltline, shifting that to Central to Carrollton as well. And we will have the routes published this year by July 15th. And that, you know, as that goes, you've all done this long enough, you know that as the year goes on, you know, you're two, three weeks in, we're still adjusting the routes based on ridership, based on attendance and those pieces. So that's what I have from operations. I will pass it to, I believe, Ms. Holcomb.
Thank you, Chris. Good evening, Dr. Eldridge, Mr. Shackman, and distinguished members of the board. The leadership and learning department has been hard at work preparing and planning for our first big event, which was to meet with the principals of the consolidated campuses on April the 4th. On that day, we wanted to ensure that we had very direct and explicit instructions, much like we do our lesson planning. And when we all get it together in a room, many of our directors and coordinators, we had to start planning and thinking about all the things. And we came out with a very color-coded system for our campuses to hope streamline this process, to make it much simpler, because there's a lot of things on our campuses that need to be packed, but also they need to be received at certain locations. So that began with our principal relocation toolkit. This was inspired, thank you to Mr. Miranda, he had a great idea, that we then got our entire department together. Karen and her team executed this beautifully, and it really was a collaborative effort between every department and the SLT group. So the principal toolkit was provided for them at the meeting, and it was a digital kind of a brochure, if you will, that had links out to all of the important information. We wanted them to be able to go to one stop and go out, go to link out to all of the instructions. And so what you see, I know that's small to see on the screen there, but it goes through some things for HR with staffing. There was also great explicit details provided for the relocation process in general from operations. It was anything from timelines to boxes to the overall process of packing and moving. And then it went into some information with technology and obviously our department with what to do with the instructional materials. So with that, we had quite a few different things that we needed to take into account, which were things that we have recently adopted, that we need to account for with inventory. We also had some old out-of-adoption things that we needed to also address and maybe do some purging. But then we also had campuses that were relocating programs, but maybe not the whole campus. And we needed to ensure that all of these things ended up in the right location. And that is determined off of, of course, staffing and that the number of units that would be needed at the different schools. So what that turned into was then a very colorful color-coding system that we are using to label the boxes to try to streamline the efficiency at the campus when the movers come and Bobby's team shows up to take them to their receiving locations. So with that, each of the campuses has a color code that we will print the labels that operations has provided for us on certain colors so that when they are labeled on the boxes, they will know exactly what boxes go to Blanton and what boxes go to Stark or whatever the campus may be. And so that has really helped to streamline the moving piece of after it's packed and boxed up. In addition, we then took information that was going to be specific for each subject area and program, and we created a consolidation hub. This hub has direct links to each of those content areas as well as programs such as pre-K, multilingual, all of the content areas from secondary to elementary, and then, of course, all of the facilities information that they needed to link back to for operations. Within each of those buttons, what you would see, and I'm going to give just a few samples, each of the directors and coordinators have done an absolutely outstanding job in creating not only timelines for their departments, but also to ensure that we have really explicit instructions on what needs to go where. One thing to keep in mind is that our priority are our students and instruction right now, and we did have some star testing going on over the last few weeks. And so we have made sure that the timelines were not going to be interruptive of any of the things we were doing on campuses, and it's an ongoing process, of course, throughout the spring. And so one of the things that you'll see, it's from a distance here, on the left-hand side, this is an example of the science department, but they did initial planning meetings at the campus level with the principals. And this was also to ensure, following our meeting, that they were understanding what needed to happen at each of their schools. This example that Ms. McLean put together has a link for each of the campuses, and they have their own specific instructions. Because at Long, for example, there might be different materials there that need to be dealt with differently than at maybe one of the elementary schools. And so each of those has their own link. In addition to that, the campus communication was then communicated via the specialists as well as the coaches, and they did planning time at the schools to be able to prepare for what those next steps would be. They also have great collaboration, and I have to give a big shout-out to Cindy Niedabitz and Robin and her team. This is really a labor of love between all of our departments because we have a lot of materials that we need to account for in an inventory way because we've just recently purchased science materials. And so all of those materials will get scanned back into our system so that we can account for all of them, and then they will then be relocated to other campuses as needed. And so that is something that we're working in great collaboration with Ms. Niedabitz. In addition, there's sorting, there's label, labeling, there's packing, and then, of course, there are purging of some items that are no longer needed. Kristi and the specialists went to the campuses, as well as Brianna and her team, Shashawn, Erica, Pierre, all of the directors and coordinators have been onsite at the campuses to help pack up what I'm going to call the district side of things because there are science labs and all kinds of other materials that need to possibly go back to our science warehouse where they can sort like items and then redistribute things as needed. And there's other items that need to go directly to campuses and don't need to go back to a common location. And so there's a lot of hands on deck at the campuses to pack up and get things prepared. And then there are, of course, lots of great visuals, but you can see there, the timeline just kind of shows if it's a district purchase material, where does it need to go? If it's a science material, where is it going to go? And then what can be purged? And that is a really important thing to communicate with our campuses because everything has ISBN numbers and barcodes, and they're very specific to how we have invested in those materials on what are things that are considered out of adoption and what things are not. One thing I wanted to give a great shout-out to was the elementary reading language arts team was able to locate some materials, some books that are no longer in adoption, and they are creating summer reading packs, and every one of the students is going home with their own set and collection of books, which I thought was an excellent way to put books in the hands of our students for this summer. So that's just an example, but we have one of those for every single grade content area and every school. So this was something I wanted to share with you. This is just one sample of packing up of what the directors have been doing on the campuses. It is a teamwork, of course, between all the directors. The campus coaches that are onsite at these schools are also helping to pack up materials. Our secretaries have had a great, great piece of this and have done an incredible job, as well, of, of course, the librarians, Cindy's department. In special services, Sarah's team as well has been doing similar support. So I'm going to play a little video for you, and this is a guided reading library at Central. And Brianna was there packing this up. I believe it is completely packed up. She was really excited. And... But what you're going to see here is as you look down this column and this row, each of these books are leveled in a certain order. They are grouped according to like items, and they need to stay together. So as we pack up things, it's important that we label them so that we can get the sets intact back to the next location. So this is an example of some of the packing up that's going on. Oh, y'all can't see that. Hold on just a second. Oh, it's that sneaky window.
Let's start over. There you go.
Oh, gosh. It's row after row after row after row. These are excellent materials and things that we will continue to use within the district, but it's not something that we can just stick in a box and not properly label because we will have a complete mess at the end if it ends up in a location that are, you know, mixed and not, you know, put together. So I just wanted you to have a kind of a visual of this is one room, but we also have this at other campuses as well as science closets, math manipulative closets, all of those things are district-supported materials that we are assisting the campuses and getting boxed up so that we can get them to the right locations. So... Oh, but wait, there's more. At the very end of this, you'll see an example of some of, you know, books that may be out of adoption that they don't need. And so, again, being able to pack up summer literacy kits for our students to leave with books was really an exciting part. Thank you. Perfect. Thank you so much. Okay, and so this is just an example. This is four different timelines. The one on the top left is the secondary language arts. We also have the bottom right is Sandy Meyer. She's done this with our McCorder move recently and did an amazing job. She has a great inventory system, and Pretty has this down as a well-oil machine. And so she's got her timelines there for how she's assisting with the pre-K moves. Multilingual programs has one of theirs outlined as well. And then the top right is Sarah Rowland and her team, who have special services, instructions, and timelines for support in packing up for their items. And then this visual I just wanted to share with you is an example of social studies materials, and these flow charts really help them to decipher if this, then this. And it's kind of helpful for them to see if it's a district purchase item, what needs to happen versus if it's a department material or a campus or a teacher. And so these are all things that we've provided some live links for the teachers to be able to have access to, as well as the campus principals and leading the efforts at their campus. So I'm going to turn this now over to the fabulous area directors for the campus events.
Dr. Eldridge, President Shackman, Board of Trustees, good evening. I'll give you a quick update on the consolidation, consolidated campus end-of-year events. We talked a little bit about March and April and some of the events that are going on with the parent update and the student update in March and April, and then the pop-up registration events that have taken place. Those are specific dates, but that's really an ongoing thing, registering students. Since today's May 1st, and we have, I counted 15 days left of school with students. The big event is really the campus farewell event that's coming up on May the 16th for Central and then May the 22nd for the other three schools. So that's going to be a great opportunity for all our stakeholders to celebrate the history of these outstanding campuses as we turn the page. So that was a quick slide for me, and I'll turn it over to Mr. Miranda.
Good evening. Well, throughout the month of April, elementary schools who offer a pre-K and kindergarten program for the 25-26 school year hosted very successful information nights. Our families received valuable information about the programs and also had the opportunity to receive registration support onsite. I'm also excited to communicate that district-wide campus welcome nights will take place at our middle schools, as you see, on May 6th from 5:00 to 7:00, and then at our elementary schools on May 13th from also 5:00 to 7:00. Our campuses will open their doors to all incoming students and showcase their schools in a variety of ways to celebrate their new home, including meeting administrators, teachers, and also providing students and their families with information needed for the 25-26 school year. I will pass it over to Ms. Rowland.
Good evening, Mr. Shackman, Dr. Eldridge, and board members. We have been working with Kim and her department, but I also want to update you a little bit on the timeline of communications that we had for our parents. On February 7th, we notified parents that may have been impacted by the prior year adjustments, and if the board voted for consolidation, would be impacted again. And so we kind of wanted to give them a heads-up. We had some great conversations with the parents, so that turned out to be a positive conversation. The directors enjoyed talking with them, and they were grateful for the heads-up. And then after the board vote, we contacted all families who would be impacted with their new campus. The week of March 10th through the 14th, we provided a phone call, an email, and we also mailed them a letter in the old-fashioned snail mail, so to make sure that they got their information of their next-year campus after the consolidations. There are some special cases that we are unable to tell the parents of their next campus. We have to wait for the ARD committee to determine the program that the student, that is appropriate for the student. And so in those cases, we are waiting for the ARD committee decisions, and we will either have a proposed school offering at the ARD or we'll let the parents know quickly after the ARD what campus they'll be at for the next year. The other thing we wanted to make sure is we were assuring that we would have as minimal amount of moves as possible due that we would have as minimal amount of moves as possible due to rezoning. So, if they were moved last year, we kept them into their, in their same campus unless a consolidation happened or it was a natural move. So, from an ELC III class to a IV class, an ELC IV class to kindergarten, 5th grade to 6th grade, and 8th grade to 9th grade, that we can't control. Those are natural moves. We wanted to make a commitment to our families and get their next-year campus to them as quickly as we, as possible. And so, by this Tuesday, all parents received an announcement of where their student would be next year. We've had to follow up with a few phone calls. If the email didn't go through and parents had questions. But my directors are continuing to contact parents if a question comes up. And then, the last thing, we are here for support for parents. With questions, they can call me, they can call our department. My team is fabulous and has really enjoyed, as much as you can enjoy working with parents through this. It's been fun to hear their conversations and just the gratitude that the parents have for us reaching out and letting them know what their campus would be for the next year. And next, I'm going to let Dr. Smoskus talk about HR.
All right. Thank you, Sarah. President Shackman, Dr. Eldredge, board members. As you know, the HR department started working very diligently back in March, putting together a strong staff consolidation toolkit so that we had some very specific guidelines and timelines that we provided to our staff that involved the survey that we wanted teachers to be able to provide us some input on where, giving them some, their top priorities or reasons where they would like to go, et cetera. So, what I want to share with you tonight, I'm a numbers girl. And so, I'm going to start with the elementary. Just so you know, the timeline, we had communicated and touted in our toolkit that we would have everyone notified by May 1st. Today is May 1st and I can stand here in front of y'all saying with 100% assurance that we have finally got everyone placed in a location today. We did have one last placement at about 4:30 today that we finalized today. So, with 100% assurance, we have met that timeline. So, with our elementary, at the original time of when we started looking at our consolidation numbers, we had 99 teachers from all three campuses, 31 paraprofessionals, three nurses, three counselors, nine clerical. And as you heard from Chris earlier, he and his department helped out with the custodial nutrition and the operations team. With regards to teachers themselves, as far as the placement breakdown for our elementaries, 32 teachers were reassigned due to program moves such as your pre-K, your bilingual, and your LEAP programs. We had 55 teachers follow our students to the new campuses due to rezoning and remembering that we kept to that, maintaining the 22-to-1 ratio. We did have some staff that did announce resignations for various reasons. I do have that data specifically of what those are. We did have two retire, one stayed home with the baby, three moving closer to home, three due to poor performance, two to another district, one went back to school, and one went to the private sector. And so, that has, that is the information right now with our, our elementary staff. And then, with our long staff, we started that process with 41 teachers, 12 paraprofessionals, one nurse, two counselors. We had 28 teachers placed in secondary vacancies. Five teachers went to elementary vacancies. We did have some teachers from the long campus that were certified. And they, they put on one of their choices to go to an elementary. So, we did, we did, we were able to do that. And then, eight relocated to the rezoned, with the rezoned students. As far as next steps and some of the things that we're working on currently, as you've heard, our district leaders have collaborated extensively to coordinate the packing of classrooms and the strategic movement of staff and materials. And I have to give a shout out to Kim and Chris and Robin on the hard work that they're doing there, offering and supporting the teachers in terms of what they're doing, helping them with packing and moving. Our principals, when we were notifying our staff, we were notifying them via email and verbally. And once we notified the teacher, then we notified the outgoing principal, as well as the incoming principal. And the principals have already welcomed the incoming teachers. And a lot of them have already supported them already with some onboarding and orientation. They have already had some staff come and meet and walk the campuses at this point. Also, I'd like to highlight the fact that because we know that the teachers are going to have to unpack and set up classrooms in their new locations, we have decided to give them, grant them, receive a comp day to support their transition and classroom setup. So, that, that time will be comped as one of their, one of their two comp days to be used in November. And so, we want to make sure we honor that this year as well. We've already opened the voluntary transfer window. It is currently open and it does close on Mondays. And then, the principals will have until June 4th to finalize that. And then, because we still have some remaining future vacancies coming open in special education bilingual and some other vacancies, I want to announce that on June 5th, we are going to host a job fair at the New Tech Center from 3:00 to 6:00 PM for all departments. On this particular slide, I just want to share with, with, with y'all that these are some of the comments that we have heard throughout the process. I would like to acknowledge the hard work and dedication of the directors. Ms. Bones, Ms. Dr. Paradas, and Ms. Scroch, they have worked very hard throughout this process, ensuring that every single person has been touched in terms of where they're heading, what they're doing. We've made every, every effort to honor at least one of the employees' preferences indicated on the survey, whether that is a campus placement, a grade level placement, or an opportunity to work with a preferred colleague. Would it have been nice to have honored all three of those? That would have been great, but unfortunately, we had to at least try to honor at least one of those. And we did so. While this has been a complex and emotionally challenged process, I'm proud to share that all impacted employees have, as I mentioned earlier, been notified as of today. And I just want to end, since I'm the last speaker, that I can't thank you enough for the support and what you all have had to endure during this very difficult time. I look around at some of my colleagues in the HR, in the HR world as they are riffing staff and having to remove staff from their, their accounts. We have honored giving everybody a position somewhere in the district. And so, I want to take this opportunity to thank the school board, your advocacy to allow the district to keep all of our staff during this very difficult and trying time. So, thank you very much. And with that, I was the last speaker.
Dr. Smoskus, thank you very much. And to all of you who have helped to inform and enlighten us, we appreciate what you've done. It is a challenging time and we are navigating through it, I think, strongly as it can possibly be done. And, okay, the board, questions? Ms. Brady.
Ms. Rowland, hate to pull you out. My question really is about the, we had several parents here, a couple, couple of meetings ago, very concerned about our ABC kids that had been moved, I guess, last year.
Yes.
And I know that we were actually moving them again because they were at McCoy.
Yes.
So, their current campus or what will be their current campus in the fall, is that going to be sustainable for the time being?
Yes.
So, they do not have to move again?
Yes, they should not have to move again.
Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Ms. Benabides.
Yes, I wanted to ask about the principals. I didn't see any of that mentioned, HR department. Yes, any of the slides.
So, that's going to start next week. We wanted to get all the staff finalized this week, or by today.
Thank you.
Ms. Barnes.
Thank you, guys. I just have a clarifying question. I know you had mentioned about moving all the district supplies and the, like, classroom supplies that belong to the school. What about personal supplies, especially elementary school teachers? We know they bring a lot of personal items that they kind of use to infuse into their classroom. Is there timing on that or are you assisting with that as well?
The personal supplies, those are up to the teachers to move. We've provided boxes for that, but there's a liability within moving all of the personal pieces. But the boxes are...
So, you have boxes and they'll have an opportunity to move that out?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Hypeel.
Mr. Morris, since you're there, just a couple of clarifying questions. One is, the last day is the day after school is out and is that due to contracts?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
I think I said the last day of school when I was here, I'm sorry. Yes, it's the 23rd, yes.
Okay. And then, my other question is, I have heard some murmurings in the community about Blalack Middle School and portables. And it was said that the portables are because we don't have enough space for the children. Could you please clarify why the portables are being placed at Blalack?
Portables at Blalack, those are being placed at Blalack for construction, bond construction. They have nothing to do with the consolidation or rezoning at all. In fact, we began permitting on the portables a year ago. So, that's, that's been in the works for some time now.
Great, thank you, sir.
Ms. Rowland.
You can stay.
Okay.
I have a question about the security. I think it was a security guard over at, I want to say Perry, oh, found it, Perry and Beltline. I think I'm concerned about, it's a safety concern mostly, that our kids would possibly be traveling across a major intersection, unless I read that incorrectly. But can we ensure that we have additional?
I think I understand what you're asking.
Okay.
That is more or less, yes, there.
So, it says Perry and Beltline?
Yes, ma'am. That would be an added precaution.
Okay.
The Central students, there currently are no regular education buses at Central Elementary. And so, theoretically, students at Central would either have to cross north, Beltline, east, Josie. And so, we're going to provide bus transportation for students at Central. However, as a precaution, we're going to see if we can still get crossing guards at those locations instead of the pleasant run to Perry and then, the Perry-Beltline. That would be more beneficial to ensure if there are any stragglers or anyone who doesn't make it to the bus, that that would just be an added precaution. So, we're going to see if we can do that. That would not be the only safer place.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Serbocik.
Thank you. Ms. Rowland, here, you again, sorry. You mentioned that campus assignment for students that we're still pending an ARD committee decision. I mean, when are those, are those already scheduled? Or they're, the discussions and the placement is happening? I mean, are we looking at a family is going to find out the day before school starts?
I hope not. Some of it has to do with data evaluation and scheduling. So, it's going to be different for every campus, for every student. Our goal is to have, for kids who, for a move is going to rely on something later on, is to make a guess, a best guess at the beginning of the year ARD. And if you get it right, you're right and we can place you. If we have to wait on some data and evaluation to know what's the best classroom to meet the students' needs, we have to wait on what the ARD committee determines is the right class. Sometimes, it's between a couple of different classes. And they're looking at the data to make that determination. So, we want, we are encouraging to have them as fast as you can before the end of school so we don't have to wait till the last day of school.
Okay, and the tracking of those is by name, by list? I mean, we're tracking that individually for each student that does not yet have an assignment and monitoring the status.
Yes. And typically, those are kids moving from our early childhood IV class to kindergarten age. Just try to make sure they pick the right class for that student.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay.
And we do have a list.
Okay. Then, for HR, I saw the, the first statement on there for, I think it said a teacher as a comment, moving from 400 to 800, scary? Which I assume for kids as well, it might be. But as we provide the support to our students and our family, I want to make sure there's support for our staff in these changes. That's my expectation. So, I don't know what it is. I don't know if it's a mentor at the new campus. I don't know what it is, but my expectation is support.
Perfect. Duly noted.
Ms. Brady, I believe you had a...
I just want to double, just say that as well, that our staff needs support too. But one of the clarifying questions I was going to ask you, Mr. Moore, is just, there have been murmurings that we are only allowing 10 boxes to come from a classroom that's been around for 30 years. So, I just want to be clear that we're providing 10 boxes, but there is more stuff and it is wrapped up and labeled. It will also be moved to the next campus.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. And we, like I'd mentioned, we, we talked with four districts. Two use 10, two use more than 10. The two that use more said, "Go with 10." That was a solid number based on their experiences. But also, Ms. Holcomb in curriculum, they had boxes as well. And they're lending, they're doing a big lift with regard to packing curriculum materials at the campuses and assisting within the classroom to some extent as well with the instruction and whatnot. But if there are more boxes needed, we, we will get boxes there.
And if the teacher were to have boxes that she labeled and it would go with the things that are already going to that campus?
If it, if they, the, the instruction materials and the, the, we've given them, I guess, inventory forms, color-coded, all that, yes, they label it.
It'll go.
Facilities picks it up. I'm sorry, that's like the 77th time I've done that to the microphone to you guys, I'm sorry. Facilities is picking those up and delivering them and they'll be there by the 28th of July. So, when they arrive in their classroom or their new location, it'll be waiting on them.
Okay, so, the only thing the teacher will be responsible for is any personal items that they want, they would take that home with them and then, bring it back? There's no storage available for personal items?
Correct.
Got it. Thank you very much.
Yes.
Mr. Moore, when I was a little nina at Central Elementary, the chairs and tables were really little, right? I'm thinking about repurposing Central for our Turner kids. Is there going to be a complete swap-out of desks, chairs, et cetera?
Yes, ma'am. Facilities walked that the other day with two of the administration staff from, from Turner. Turner was hopeful that we could utilize, I guess, some of more of the 5th grade classroom so we wouldn't have to, the furniture in there, if you will. So, they wouldn't have to move quite as much. But we're going to end up utilizing the Central gym, pretty much taking the furniture that's in the classrooms now at Central, putting it into the gym. And we're going to move furniture from the, what will be the construction areas at Turner. We're going to have to move that over. It wasn't quite big enough to, for the, for the high school students. So, the gym will be utilized as furniture storage. And then, we are going to move the furniture from Turner in the construction areas into the Central campus.
That's great. Now, another question is repurposing all the furniture from the elementary schools, junior high schools? Because I know when we redid Perry, there was dumpsters and dumpsters of chairs and tables and I hated seeing that.
We're going to, that's part of the inventorying process for the warehouse. I mean, when we'll, they'll declare, we'll go through and what's salvageable, what's usable will be inventoried and warehoused. And anything that's not usable, we can auction that off. And the things that are not, that they're beyond repair, beyond use, they would be part of, in the future, depending on what we do with the buildings, part of potential, they would be onsite there for demolition, et cetera.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Sorry, I forgot one thing.
Yes, ma'am.
You're off the hook, though.
Okay.
My question is about, this has been extremely helpful. A lot of information to really understand and be able to communicate with the community when we receive questions. Very logistic-based, but also student services-supporting base and all, great information. I would request that we have a future presentation focused on student achievement. Because we have students that are moving from one school to another and their achievement, their history being in that transition for student achievement. So, Mr. Shackman, I'm going to request that, I know I need a second board member per operating procedures, that we have another presentation. Because I know that you guys are working on supporting principals in this transition, wherever kids are transitioning to. So, I would just like to get an update on how we're supporting student transitions.
I would agree. I'd be willing to be your second. Might I suggest that that would be about October, November timeframe?
I think I'm thinking more like, how are we setting the school year up for success in, like, looking at student data because those kids are incoming? But maybe, maybe more about a progress update because we know it's happening. So, that's a valid point.
Correct, that was what I was thinking. Okay, I will write that down and list it for October agenda, all right? Any other questions? Team, thank you very much. Team, thank you very much. Sounds like you all haven't been taking lunch very often. Thank you very much. Next on our agenda for the meeting is our consent agenda. Consent agenda is a mechanism that the board uses to approve a number of routine items together with a single vote. It is in compliance with the Texas Open Meetings Act and the public notice for this meeting includes the list of all consent agenda items. The board has been provided ample information about these items in advance. Prior to any action on the consent agenda, board members may request withdrawal of individual items for clarification or discussion. Board members, we have consent agenda items A through W. Are there any recommendations to pull any of those items? I see none, so do I have a motion. Ms. Brady?
I make a motion that we approve the consent agenda as presented.
I have a motion from Ms. Brady. Is there a second? Second from Ms. Hatfield? Any discussion? All in favor, please signify, raise your hand. Ms. Canada, that is unanimous. There were no items removed from consent, so the next item up for our agenda is 6B. Consider the approval of non-business days for consideration. Now, Ms. Rodriguez.
So to better align with the district staff workday calendar and to optimize time for when the district is closed but expected to respond to public information requests, we are recommending the amended dates in the agenda for approval. For background, the 10 non-business days approved in February included March 19th, the 20th, and the 21st, October 15th, the 16th, and 17th, November 26th, and December 29th, 30th, and 31st. Considering the changes to this year's staff workday calendar, we believe that three days in October would be better used in November and December. For context, we have seen an increase in requests and as a former journalist, I do understand the importance of PIRs and to be responsive. So it's also something that our taxpayers and our citizens, you know, this is an important thing for them. They should, we are transparent, they should receive that information. So, for example, a snapshot from last March to this March shows a more than 200% increase in requests. So we understand how important it is to be responsive and to provide that information in a timely fashion, which is why we have submitted the amended dates for approval.
Board members, any questions? Ms. Brady?
You mentioned there's a 200% increase. Can you give us an actual number?
If I don't have it, I can get it for you.
Is it 1 to 2? Is it 1 to 5?
What was that?
Is it 5 to 10? What's the, what was the beginning number that gives you the increase?
I can probably get that to you from our public information specialist, but I can get that for you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I don't have those numbers, just percentage.
Board members, this is an item marked for action. Does the board wish to take an action at this point?
I make the motion that we approve 6B as presented.
6B as presented. We have a motion on the dais. Is there a second? Ms. Hatfield is the second. Any discussion or questions? Board members, all in favor? Oh, I'm sorry, okay.
I just want to clarify to make sure the community recognizes that this is not a retro act of change. The dates from March remain the same. They were March 19th, 20th, and 21st. This is a change for the fall because the calendar for the fall has now been set. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments? All in favor, please indicate by raising your hand. That is unanimous. Ms. Canada. Thank you, Ms. Rodriguez. Our next item is consider and approve the CV 2030 update and I'm going to hand it over to Ms. Herbocik.
And I'm going to immediately hand it over to Ms. Hatfield because Ms. Hatfield led this final step and so she's going to walk through those and then what our next steps are and any proposed actions tonight. Thank you.
All right. So first off, I just want to express my genuine appreciation to the rest of the board, my colleagues on the board, the district administration, the district improvement committee, and the original CV 2030 committee for the work that has gone into the development of this scorecard. I am also personally thankful for Ms. Herbocik and Ms. Barnes for the spirited discussions that we have had as a governance subcommittee and the reminder of what governance means when I might want to put extra indicators in that we don't actually need. So this development process has been a journey and I genuinely believe the scorecard is a tremendous step in bringing the much-needed clarity with measurable indicators for sustained, focused, continuous improvement. After the board reviewed and gave their final feedback to the CV 2030 scorecard in our work study on April 10th, the governance subcommittee made minor recommended changes from the board. We built a survey, we tested the survey, we retested the survey, and then we shared an email that we drafted as the governance subcommittee with the survey link to administration. Thank you to Brian Marsh for communicating and reminding the CV 2030 committee and for Ms. Holcomb for doing the same with the district improvement committee. As the DIC liaison, I also did a short presentation during the DIC meeting on April 21st to also provide additional context to the DIC about the purpose of the survey. The survey sent to both of those committees, make sure I get my numbers right, asked respondents to respond to a couple of questions related to each of the five strategic priorities on the scorecard. For each strategic priority, they were asked to rate how effectively the scorecard could be used to measure her district progress. Then they were provided an opportunity to write comments or suggestions related to the strategic priority. Of the 45 respondents that started the survey, 36% were parents or community members and 84% were staff members. Yes, that is not 100% because respondents could select multiple options and they did. We similarly found that some respondents selected multiple options on the other category, which was 60% serving on the DIC and 42% serving on the CV 2030 committee. And for each strategic priority, we also had about a third of the respondents provide comments to us. The comments were then categorized, so we used a little qualitative analysis, and we categorized the comments into groups. Those groups were categorized into three categories. One were how to, possibilities of how we could revise the scorecard and add clarity to the scorecard. Others were information focused on more like how we could maybe do something with this indicator. So the indicators are really focused on how we're going to measure it, but as a board, our job is not to then produce the results and the action plan. But there were many people that provided information on how they thought we could do this, so we intend to provide that to administration for them to see that as they go through their how action steps. And then the third category was general feedback, which was anywhere from, this is really exciting, this is much more clear, I really appreciate this. There were some comments that were, I don't feel qualified to fully evaluate this because this is out of my expertise area. And so we had a range of comments in our general feedback. So the subcommittee tonight has provided the board a copy of the scorecard with the recommended revisions based on the feedback. So you have that in front of you. In red is where we have highlighted the additional recommended changes based on the survey. You will see that in gray, and this is also publicly available in board book. So if you're watching online and you want to look, or staff, community members, you're welcome to look at the new scorecard that we are considering tonight. The board has been provided a copy with red text, which is the recommended changes based on the survey. And they include additional gray shaded areas with recommendations for the board to be provided additional data. And then on strategic priority 2, there was a recommendation to change the language on objective 2. Instead of using the word "the whole person," they felt like it should focus on students and staff. And so we are recommending that change. And then the last change was clarifying in the communication area that it would be important to set an expectation that communication be in multiple languages. And so those are the changes that we are recommending to the board. Again, the updated version is available, publicly available for the committee, so our, or for the community. Our next steps include, we want to send a follow-up email to the CV 2030 committee and the DIC, thanking them for their engagement in the survey and for, and we want to provide them our next steps. We want to share the survey results with administration, specifically the comments that can be used in action planning relating to how the scorecard will be used. Want to answer any questions the board may have this evening. And then finally, we are prepared to offer some motions to the board to continue providing direction as we move forward.
Board members, any questions? Go ahead, Ms. Brady.
I just want to say thank you all for your work on this because it was quite the undertaking and y'all did it, so thank you very much. It'll be so clarifying for not only future board members, but the community, staff, everybody having a common goal and being able to see it on paper along the way will be fantastic and to have some history one day. So thank you all.
To the governance committee, thank you for helping to drive us as a group towards metrics that are measurable, something that I felt like we needed for a number of years. And I think you did an outstanding job of helping us to achieve that goal. So are you looking for us to vote to approve this document as it currently stands or...
That is correct. We also have a few other recommended motions. So we have a series of motions that Ms. Barnes has.
Okay, so let's start with the first motion that you have.
I think this might be my first motion I've ever made, so correct me if I'm wrong. First motion would be to approve the objectives, indicators, and measures of the CV 2030 scorecard.
Okay, is there a second? I have a second for Ms. Brady. Any comments, questions? Board, we have a motion on the floor. All in favor, please indicate by raising your hand. Ms. Canada, that is unanimous. Your next motion?
My second motion is to direct the superintendent to work with administration and the government subcommittee to finalize the baselines and goal metrics by September 4th, 2025.
Ms. Garza Rojas is seconding that. Questions, comments? Board, all in favor?
I want, oh, sorry. I just want to clarify that finalizing it means that the board will also receive a copy of what data sets will be consistently used to measure the goals.
Okay.
All right.
All right, all in favor? That is unanimous.
For my third motion, I would like to direct the governance subcommittee to work with the superintendent and administration to develop the board meeting discussion calendar as it relates to the scorecard for the 2025-26 school year.
Okay. I have a motion, I have a second from Ms. Brady. Of course, this is all contingent upon the election and who's that governance committee. Any questions? Okay, all in favor? The motion carries, it's unanimous. All right?
Thank you.
And if that was your first motion, you did well three times. I believe this brings us to the end of our published agenda. We have listed item 7 as a closed meeting and we are going to do that now and move to a closed session. You're welcome to stay, you're welcome to go home. Thank you for your attendance and participation. Thank you for your attendance and participation.
I got to see the new ambulance. The board is back in open session at 10:11 PM on May 1st. Board members, this item was listed for possible action. Is there any action that the board wishes to take now? If not, I believe we have reached the end of our agenda and I am going to call the meeting over.
I just wanted to make one comment.
Okay.
That's okay?
Sure.
Just to say Happy Mother's Day to everyone and I hope you have a great week.
I'm a man.
To the ladies, I'm a dais and our teachers in the community.
Thank you, Carolyn. Anyway, and so this is the adjournment at 10:12.